Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, February 28th, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon. We'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, first thing on our agenda is public comment, and before the Commissioner Cameron is on his way, we think, right? He may be joining us momentarily. He got delayed at an event that was before this.
He said he was right up front and couldn't leave early.
Right, so we'll look forward to him coming. We have two people signed up for public comment. Laura, is it Meisner, is that how you say it? And Deborah West, and they are going to comment on the ordinance that we have up, right? So would you like to come over here and make your comments? Yes, right there. Thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Is this okay?
Yes, that's great.
My name's Laura Meisner. I'm with the Coalition Advocating for Animals, and I want to thank Commissioner Carlson for helping spearhead getting this ordinance brought forth. But I'm here to ask for a positive vote, passage, for this revision of the county code, Chapter 10.10, to prohibit the sale of live animals on county property or public right-of-way in Marion County. I think it's a really important ordinance. It was passed in the city of Salem a while back, and we need it in the county so that people don't cross the street on Lancaster and proceed on the other side of the street to try to sell puppies and kittens and whatever. It's also, I think, a serious, or could be a serious, public health concern because these are, generally speaking, not vaccinated animals that can, you know, project, you know, other animals can pick up distemper and diseases. So I really encourage you to pass this, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Deborah West, and I'm with PAL, Preventa Litter, who provides spay neuter assistance for anyone needing it in our community. I agree with Laura, and I'm very involved with rescues and the Marion County Dog Shelter, and this really is a health concern for people and their pets. There are many reputable rescues that will help people if they need to rehome their dogs. And reputable breeders would never stand on a street corner to sell their dogs or cats. So I'm advocating for this amendment to the county code 10.10, and appreciate Commissioner Carlson's work on this, and I'm sure Tamra had something to do with it. It's very much appreciated, and there are many, many resources for people, and the rescues and groups like CAFSA and PAL are happy to work with Marion County Sheriff's and the Police Department in making this information available to people as they tell them, "You cannot sell your dogs, your puppies on the corner." So, thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, Tamra had a whole lot more to do with than I did.
Oh, thank you, Tamra.
I sent her the email and said, "Can you work on this?"
Thank you, Tamra.
Yeah, thank you very much, Tamra. It's very much appreciated and very much needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wanted to speak under public comment? All right, if not, is, was it Commissioner Cameron's turn today?
Probably.
I think this is an artful way to dodge doing the consent calendar, but anyways, Commissioner Brunt, I don't know what you feel like.
I'd be happy to. Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the consent calendar this morning. On it, under Board of Commissioners, we have OLCC applications with recommended approval. Time Food Market in Salem, Oregon, this'll be a rough one, I'm not even gonna try. Michaelado's Something El Perico LLC, Salem, Oregon. USA Retail Mart LLC, DBA Marion Grocery and Turner Business Services. Approve Amendment Number Two to the Contract for Services with Reis Complete Security Solutions to Add $84,000 for Continued Maintenance and Repairs, Planned Capital Improvement Projects, and a Lease Renovation Project. Approve an Order Appointing Sandra Fixon to the Marion County Compensation Board with the Term Ending October 31st, 2018. District Attorney's Office, approve a Grant from the Oregon Department of Justice for $219,198 and 14 cents to assist with funding District Attorney positions that provide direct services to victims of domestic violence.
All right, I'll second your motion, and I think it's Michelada si antojitos del perico.
I think that's what I said.
Right, I taught Spanish for a year. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, those are approved. Now, we'll move on to our action items. First item is under Board of Commissioners. It's Consider an Order Approving New Policy Number 213, Public Records Request, and Approval of an Order Rescinding Policy Number 210, Standard Photocopy Fees for the General Public. And Lisa Trauernecht is here to give us the information about this item.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner. I'm Lisa Trauernecht, and I am here to present a new administrative policy on public records requests. This would be Policy 213. This policy outlines the requirements for county departments on responding to public records requests that comes in. It identifies the need for the departments to select a public records officer that will manage those requests as they're being worked on in the departments, and then also guidelines for charging fees for, to reimburse the county for the work that's being done in processing those requests. Included in your packet is the standard fees that I would like to present, and then also is Policy 210 that is an old photocopy fee, policy for the general public, and I would recommend that we rescind that one because it is rolled into this new policy.
Anything else? So let's back up a little bit. The reason that we have this policy coming forward is because the legislature passed some legislation around public records.
Correct.
Public records has always been, I think, it's, I think the Oregon Sunshine laws about public meetings and public records have always been kind of the hallmark of our transparency in government, and yet, there's a balancing act that we have to do because some records are exempt from public disclosure for privacy purposes or a number of other things, and then other, but most records are public. But I think the question was how quickly jurisdictions, local, state, other governments, other jurisdictions were making those records available to the public. So this policy was developed to actually provide a framework for us to abide by the new law and make sure that we're responding quickly and following the things that the statutes as we're supposed to do. Did I get that right?
Correct, and we have been, we have been complying with the law since it went into effect January 1st. We just didn't have this formal policy in place, and so this formalizes that for the county, not, so that going forward, the departments have specific guidelines. It does outline the requirements for responding to records. So when we receive a records request, we have to respond within five days, acknowledging that we did receive the request, and if we have the records, if we don't have the records, if we need more information. And then, once we either have all of the information we need to process the, if we have all the record, information we need to process the request, then we have 10 days to get that, get the records to the requister. If we don't have all the information, then we just have a conversation with the requister, and we may, you know, have, there may be fees attached if it's something that is going to take significant staff time to process. If it's just something very quick, you know, it could just be a quick turnaround, but this outlines that process for staff going forward.
Right, and I think it was important that when we, in the policy, we actually, well, there you are.
Sorry, sorry, I'm late.
It's all right. Defined what a public records request is, because I know, I personally get hundreds, if not more, requests during a year for someone, you know, "Could you just send me that document? Could you look at this letter? Could you send it back?" Those are not, when you're doing that immediate work, considered public records requests. I mean, this is more when you have to dig into the records.
Right.
And find something, and it's gonna take staff time, and you might need to see whether you needed to redact names, or addresses, or phone numbers, or things like that for privacy purposes, as we talked about. So it lays it all out.
Yes, correct.
So this is why it took us a while to figure all of this out. And then the photocopy policy, I think we were charging five cents a copy in the old policy, no matter what. Was it 10?
It was 10, yeah.
It was 10 cents, okay, 10 cents. But Sheriff's Office was charging different fees that we'd approved, and it was, and Assessor's Office, I think, was charging yet other fees, and it didn't contemplate putting it on flash drives and, you know, all the other things that we needed to do. So now, as you mentioned, that we've established fee schedules in, well, it's not, it's actually not in here. Is the fee schedule separate, or?
The fee schedule, there's a separate board order for the fee schedule, yes.
Yeah, it'll be a separate board order.
Right, the, the policy just outlines the procedure for charging for the fees.
Right, okay, very good. Okay, any comments?
Well, I'm gonna support this, but maybe in the future, I was looking at the fee schedule, and I'm sorry, I didn't think about it till now. There's some variable costs, obviously, the number of copies, how many, how much postage, but the one that I'm looking at is the burden rate of staff. Looks like we could've filled in a solid number, and rather than, that seems rather vague, and just use that, but it just doesn't let you give an easy quote to people how much it's gonna cost, in my eyes.
It doesn't, and that's because it depends on who is, you know, it could be a staff person doing it, or our legal counsel doing.
But my point would be, let's choose a number, go with it.
Just a staff, right. Okay, we could certainly look, look at that if.
Well, I think, I think we actually have a pretty easy process to figure that out, and then we give them a quote. That happened when there was a public records request, and we had thousands of emails that were coming out, and IT had to go in and do, I think, about four hours, and so they charged at their rate, and then the legal counsel had to go through, Noah went through and spent hours, so he charged at his rate, and they put it all together, and they gave it to the customer, I think, went pretty rapidly, and.
It does.
And they were satisfied with that, so I think it, I mean.
But that's kind of after the fact, isn't it?
Well, no, you let them know then what it's gonna be, and then they, and then they tell you whether or not they can afford that.
Fine.
Madam Chair, the problem with a single burden rate is that it would, it wouldn't capture the differences between an IT specialist versus a clerical staff doing the work.
Exactly.
So it would be very difficult to do.
Yeah, I think Cindy Johnson figured it out, and she had it in minutes. It was really easy for her. Any other discussion?
No, I think I already made my point on the thumb drives.
What was the point on the thumb drives? I can't remember.
Oh, we were gonna charge $5 for a thumb drive, right?
Uh-huh.
And on Amazon, the cheapest one I could find was $8.99 or something like that.
So it's $10 now.
Right.
Very good.
Otherwise, I was okay.
Do you want to make a motion to approve this, though?
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me to come in late from the Mount Angel SEDCor Ag Breakfast. It was well-attended, and our guest speaker was still speaking when I finally left. I will move that we approve an order, an order approving Policy Number 213, Public Records Request, and Approval of an Order Rescinding Policy Number 210, Standard Photocopy Fees for the General Public.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, those, approved and rescinded, yes.
Madam Chair, there is also the order for the fees that.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Did you, we can bring that back next week if you want to.
Okay.
That would probably be better.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, item number two.
The fee schedule's in here, it was in the document.
Is, there's no board order? Or is the board order in the document?
Adopting the fee schedule of copies of public records.
Okay, well, we'd have to add it as an item.
It's.
I know it's in the packet, but we would have, it's not on the agenda, so we would have to just by motion add it as an item. I guess we could do that, since it's in the packet. What do you think, Judge? Should we just add it?
It's in the packet.
Yes.
I thought that's what we just adopted.
No, the motion was to approve the new policy and to approve the order rescinding the photocopy fees.
So, do you want to add another line, saying, "And adopting"?
No, we'll have to create a new agenda item, and we'll have, because we've already voted on it. Okay, so let's.
Sorry, I just, I just, I know it's there, so I, and there is an order here.
Right.
Establishing the fee.
But it wasn't.
Right.
On the agenda. So Commissioner Cameron, do you want to make the motion to add it to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we add to the agenda a board order in the matter of establishing the fee schedule, schedules for the copies of public records.
Okay.
No, second, that means approving it, I guess.
No, this is just putting it on the agenda.
No, just putting it on, fine.
All right, so a motion and a second to add an agenda item that would, for considering an order to establish fee schedules for copies of public records. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 All right, that's approved. Now, we can have a motion to approve the order.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve an order establishing the fee schedule for copies of public records.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the fee schedule. I think we talked about it in the last item, and it is in the packet. Oh, now we're all the way.
Photocopies $0.25 per page.
Right, on page 20 of 23.
Flash drives $10, CDs $1, posted as actual staff time.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, fee schedules approved.
Done, thank you.
Okay, now, we will go to item, that was 1A, we'll go to item two, which is to consider approval of the 2018 federal agenda. We have Barb Young and Kirby Garrett and Michael Skipper, welcome. You guys, did you, when did you fly in?
Last week, third weekend.
Oh, really? So you've been here a little while.
Yeah, we both have family out here, so.
Ah, enjoying the weather, right? So you came, very good.
Also enjoyed some normalcy while.
So, welcome, Barb, did you want us to kick it off?
Yep, I'll go ahead and kick it off, Commissioners. For the record, Barb Young, Government Relations Manager for Marion County. I'd like to just kick off with a little bit of the history of why we do our federal agenda for our viewing audience, so they understand why we're here today. Originally, we started our federal agenda in 2001, where our agenda had focused primarily on earmarks. We were going after money to bring back to Marion County for various startup programs, infrastructure programs, or, and whatever the board and our community deemed appropriate at the time. One of our programs we did was in, working with our incarcerated population, helping them integrate back into the community. We've gone after the federal dollars to help finish off the Woodburn Interchange, and we've even got funds for native seed for our parks. I just like to show the variety of issues that we've worked on. Earmarks were discontinued in 2010, so we have evolved our program since then. We really have a strong focus on federal grants and actually federal policy issues. When I show kind of the, the, how federal policy issues really tie into Marion County, we work on the roads and bridges infrastructure, because we always need dollars for our roads and infrastructures in the county. We weighed in last time on the tax reform policy. We wanted to make sure property taxes were still a tax deduction, and we worked with our counterpart, NACO, National Association of Oregon Counties, on that issue. We work on clean energy and solid waste issues, because we have the solid waste facility in Brooks, where our municipal solid waste is taken. So we're always involved in watching all the clean energy issues going on in Congress. Also, a big issue for us are timber issues. We have ONC Timber in Marion County. We work with our private timber owners. We're good partners with the U.S. Forest Service, and then also work with our state foresters. So timber is also another big one for us. And our last one that I'll mention is the Army Corps of Engineers, working with them on our Detroit Marina projects, and also the latest issue that has come up, the Detroit Lake Fish Passage issue. So I just want to kind of show for the, for the folks watching how the federal government, maybe way back in DC, but a lot of those issues that they're dealing with directly impact what we do here in Marion County. So, and again, we'll go after our federal grants, and we'll go through a list of that for you today. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Michael and Kirby to walk us through our federal agenda for 2018.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Michael Skipper of CFM Strategic Communications. I want to thank you all for allowing us to be here today to present your 2018 federal agenda. This is an agenda we are very excited about this year for a variety of reasons, not least of which we have some very great grant projects, some of which have actually already been submitted in the past few months, and the others we expect to submit later this year in the next few months. We are looking forward to Commissioner Carlson coming out to Washington, DC next week to present this agenda to the congressional delegation and a series of federal agencies. Before we get started, I want to be sure and thank Barb Young. A lot of work and coordination goes on to put this document together over several months, and working with Barb makes it exponentially easier, and we are grateful to have her to work with, as I'm sure you are grateful to have her. So, just to give you an overview of what we're gonna be talking about today, we're going to briefly just touch on some of our recent successes, since we began working together over 10 years ago now. Then we will go through the 2018 federal agenda, item by item, Kirby and I. Then we will provide a update on some of the exciting things that have been happening in Washington the past few months, namely, the tax reform package and the recent budget agreement, two-year budget agreement. And then we will take a look at our little crystal balls and give you an idea of what to expect in the next year ahead. So just to briefly touch on our recent successes, I'm not gonna go through these. This is a list you all know well, but we've had a great record of success together in the last 10 years, over $18 million in federal grants and earmarks, everything from reentry to transportation projects like the North Fork Road and the Woodburn Interchange, to economic development in the canyon. So we're really proud of our record of success we've had together, and we are looking forward to adding to this in 2018. And then I will turn it over, that brings us to the 2018 federal agenda. We'll start with the grant projects, which are typically higher up, because they are the highest priority, and I'll turn that over to Kirby to talk about what we're doing in the canyon this year.
So as you'll see at the very top, this is our list of grant projects that we have on your federal agenda. At the very top here, we have the North Saniam Canyon. We've been working over the past several years with a laser-like focus to try to bring federal dollars to the canyon. As you all well know, back in 1996, with the passage of legislation that created wilderness in the Opel Creek area, the Opel Creek Wilderness Act, there was a promise made by Congress that they would provide $15 million in funds to offset some of the, you know, economic impact of that, ensure that the community had some sort of support moving forward after that designation was made. Here we are, 22 years later, and that, those $15 million in funds have still not been delivered to the canyon. So we've been working with a focus on the canyon to try to, you know, provide some of those federal grant dollars back here to, you know, deliver on that promise that was made by the federal government with the passage of that legislation. First of all, here, we're really excited about Tiger Grants application that we submitted last fall. This is a partnership between the county, Mill City, and Lynn County. So it's a, you know, a great project for the Tiger Grant Program, which is under the Department of Transportation. So it's an $8.1 million request. There's three critical components of the project. The first would be repair and rehabilitation of the North Saniam River Bridge, as well as the historic railroad pedestrian bridge, and then sidewalk and street improvements for Mill City. We also have in there funds for a transit shelter in anticipation of increased bus service from Mill City to Salem. So we worked with your staff to draft and put together this application. It's a, for the Tiger Grant Program, it's very competitive and a long application process. You have to put together about a 30-page narrative with a benefit cost analysis. So we really enjoyed working with your staff to put that together, in particular Danielle Gonzalez did an amazing job at not only helping us draft and edit that application, but also working with the local partners in Lynn County and Mill City to, to put together the components of that project. Your proposal also would leverage about $400,000 from Mill City and locally raised funds, as well as, how much is it? $900,000 from Lynn County that they would donate as well, or provide as a local cost match for the components in, in Mill City. Under the Tiger Grant Program for rural projects, there's no requirement for a local match, so we think this positions your project very well. It's a rural project, this administration has a focus on trying to fund projects in rural areas just like this. So we feel really good about how competitive this application is, even though it's a very competitive program. We have heard from DOT that they plan to make awards within the next month or so, so, you know, we continue to have our fingers crossed for that, but have stayed engaged with the congressional delegation to ask for their continued advocacy to DOT in support of that application, and, you know, make the case to DOT that this would be a great project for the canyon area.
Madam Chair, if I may. Yeah. Kirby, what organization makes the decision?
Department of Transportation, U.S. Department of Transportation.
Yeah, thank you.
So next, the county also submitted a grant application to the EPA under their Brownfields Program for a community-wide assessment grant. So this would provide funds to assess areas throughout the Saniam watershed that would be eligible for, you know, take, basically providing an inventory of your underutilized or vacant areas that could be turned into economic development opportunities. So, you know, the request is for $300,000. Basically, this would provide, you know, like I said, an inventory that you could then capitalize on, seek additional federal funds for cleanup and other uses as well. So this is a, both DOT and EPA will be meeting with in DC when Commissioner Carlson is out next week to discuss this, these grant projects and advocate for them in person. Thirdly, this is not a grant project, per se, but as Barb mentioned with the Detroit Fish Passage issue, after the biological opinion that NIMPs came out with, as you know, the Corps of Engineers is looking at ways to increase fish passages and monitor water temperatures in the river and in Detroit Lake. One of their, well, in the range of alternatives they're considering, they're looking at construction of a cooling tower, which could result in emptying Detroit Lake for a year, or maybe even longer, two, three years, which, as you know, would have a substantial detrimental effect to the canyon area and all the recreation and benefits from Detroit Lake that the community enjoys out there. In addition, it's a vital water source for, you know, multiple communities below the river, including the city of Salem, so. We're also, this is not on the agenda yet, but we're in the works of looking at the Federal Lands Access Program, which provides funds for projects that provide access or increase access to federal lands. This is a program we received, were able to secure a $6.2 million grant from for North Fork Road stabilization. So we're looking at the different projects and, you know, eligible opportunities that you may be, may have to solicit funds for that as well this spring. With that, I will pass it off to Skipper.
All right, and then youth homelessness in Marion County. As you'll see in the agenda, recent estimates, there's, show there is many as 1,500 homeless youth in the Salem Kaiser School District alone. So this is obviously a very important issue in Marion County and to Marion County. So with that, the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency, along with the Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, in the next month will be submitting an application through HUD's Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program to build a coordinated system that will provide temporary shelter for some of these homeless youth in, in Marion County, ages 12 to 18. So like I said, that program will be submitted this month. The way this program works, it's a little interesting. They initially will select 10 projects they want to fund, and then those 10 projects will have a couple months to submit a full plan to HUD where they can receive at least $1 million. So it can be $1 to $3 or $4 million. So we're really excited about that. Marion County is going to be actively supporting that. We're gonna be helping them submit, write and submit this application as necessary, and we will be working in Washington to continue advocacy for this, for this grant application with the congressional delegation and HUD over there. The Mental Health Court Service Expansion, so the Marion County Mental Health Court received in 2011 $250,000 over three years to get this, as an implementation grant, to get this prog, this program started. It's done a lot of great work these last six years, and this year, what we're looking at is through the Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance. They have an adult drug court discretionary grant program, which can provide up to $300,000 over three years to help these mental health and drug courts expand the scope of their services and their capacity. So we expect this program to open up sometime in March or April, and we will be working with, with your folks here in the Marion County Mental Health Court to write and submit an application for that so that they continue, they can continue the great work they're doing. I'll also note that, Commissioner Carlson, this is another meeting we'll be having next week with the Bureau of Justice Assistance to give them an overview of all the great things the Marion County Mental Health Court is doing and provide, and at the same time get some guidance on when this application will come out so we can prepare, and maybe some things to expect so we can start thinking about how to put the application together. Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, or LEED for short. This is a very exciting project in Marion County based off a template from Seattle where law enforcement agencies work together with nonprofits, stakeholders, municipal governments to divert service-resistant individuals who are routinely arrested for drug possession, other livability crimes, but not victim-related crimes. And so instead of just putting them in jail, we get them access to the services they need and help prevent the kind of revolving door of these individuals going in and out of jail. The ultimate goal really is to improve the quality of life for these clients, to improve the quality of the community, and ultimately reduce the financial burden on local, on the local criminal justice system with these individuals that just keep going in and out of jail. Finally, so that's going to be a $400,000 grant program through another Bureau of Justice Assistance grant that we expect to open up in the next few months. And then finally, a Salem River Crossing. This is obviously something the city of Salem is pushing hard for, but you have on your agenda in support of them. This project, as you know, is very much still in development, as well as the price tag, but there, since this is such a big price tag, there is going to need to be a federal component to this. So Marion County wants to be supportive in any way they can, as the city of Salem eventually seeks funding through, through the Department of Transportation, through their either Tiger or Infra Grant Programs or both. So that is all the grant projects we have this year. Like Kirby said, there's some things we're working on. There's some things we might add later in the year, but this, these grant projects represent two that have already been submitted, and three, we plan to submit in the next three months. So we're very excited about the potential for success, and we think you guys are in a great place for success this year.
So now we move on to your policy initiatives, your priorities, either issues of concern or issues you support. The first of which is the investment package infrastructure spending. This is an issue that has been talked about since the, you know, 2016 campaign. Both candidates campaigned on this, delivering infrastructure, an infrastructure package. It's something President Trump has continued to talk about since his election. Finally, this January, the White House released a outline of their proposal for infrastructure spending. What they've proposed is spending about $200 billion of federal funds, which they hope would incentivize an additional $800 billion of private and local and state funding as well, for a total of a trillion dollars' worth of infrastructure investment. We'll talk about this a little bit later in the next slide or two, but Congress has just passed a $1.5 trillion tax bill, as well as an increase in $300 billion worth of spending. So we were very optimistic about the likelihood of this being passed with those two bills now behind Congress and, you know, the price tag of those two initiatives. We think it's a little bit, it's less likely that Congress takes up something this year, but it's certainly something that's on the agenda and we could see in the next Congress as well after this election. So, you know, we continue to advocate for Marion County's priorities, though, to the delegation as it pertains, as it pertains to an infrastructure package, specifically in support of rural funding that we could utilize for the canyon, for, you know, projects that we talked about on the previous slide, and obviously more to come, as well as ensuring that, you know, local cost match requirements on some of these programs are workable for counties and local governments like yours. So next, we have Secure Rural Schools Reauthorization. It's been over two years now since Congress has reauthorized that program and provided an extension. The main impasse is simply finding funding for it, finding an offset or a pay-for, as they call it, to fund another extension has proved to be incredibly difficult, and, you know, most tend to think that the program probably will not be extended without some sort of, you know, unique finding in the budget for, for funding for this. So what we've done is tried to focus on making sure that Marion County can utilize your existing SRS funds. As you know, under Title III, in 2012, a Government Accountability Office audit came out that gave guidance to the Forest Service, telling them they can only use, they should only allow uses for these funds for search and rescue operations, which is great, but in Marion County, that probably amounts to, you know, $20,000, $30,000 per year, whereas you have received over $400,000 in SRS Title III funds since that 2012 audit came out. So we worked at the beginning of last year with the delegation, in particular Senator Merkley's office, Congressman Schrader and Walden's office, to introduce standalone legislation on both the Senate and House side that would provide this fix, allow expanded use of these funds, so that you could use them for, you know, badly needed patrols out in the forest lands, or equipment, or whatever you actually need the funds for. That legislation has passed out of the House as part of the forestry bill, as it did in the previous Congress, which is very encouraging to see, at least make it out of one chamber. Unfortunately, we've yet to find a way to move it out of the Senate chamber. There's not a whole lot of legislative vehicles that have moved besides the, you know, big, large initiatives we've seen in national headlines. So it's something we continue to stay engaged with Merkley's office on, on a regular basis, trying to figure out how we can move this, this legislation forward. As I mentioned, it did pass as part of a comprehensive forest management reform bill that the House of Representatives passed last August or September. Including that bill was also, you know, our next item here, which is responsible sustainable solutions for the ONC lands. That legislation overall for national forest lands would increase timber harvest levels and includes a specific provision for the ONC lands to ensure that there's a sustained yield off of, off of the ONC lands that provides a, you know, source of revenue for, for the county and other counties that have ONC lands within their borders. That legislation also included the next piece we have here of wildfire relief funding, or a fix to the fire borrowing problem, as it's commonly called. The Forest Service and the BLM, when these wildfires come through, will use their, will quickly use their wildfire budget to put these fires out, and then they, you know, but the fires are not out yet, so they have to, they would borrow funds from FEMA like other agencies would for earthquakes, or tornadoes, or hurricanes, but the Forest Service and BLM are not allowed to do that, so they have to borrow from their own budget, which ends up being their land management budget. As a result, they don't do the work on the forest lands. The wildfires get worse and keep coming through, so it's kind of a downward cycle. So this provision would allow for the, for the Forest Service and BLM to tap into a limited amount of FEMA funds to try to stop that cycle and get back to a situation where the Forest Service and BLM can actually start using those funds to, on land management goals that they have. And with that, I'll let Skipper take it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Kirby, maybe, what I've heard about the Secure Rural Funds, the, just a little fix that passed Congress, but we can't get through the Senate, is that
Yeah.
Our senators are concerned about anything that says SRS with it. Is that, is that what's holding this up? I mean, it's just a minor fix that we need
Sure.
To free these dollars up
Yeah.
For patrol.
Yeah. And that's, you know, that's the case we continue to take to them. And, you know, I will say Senator Merkley has been particularly helpful. He's the one that introduced this legislation, and has tried really hard to advance this. Senator Wyden is also a co-sponsor on that legislation. It is, the politics of Secure Rural Schools are tricky, and dynamics can be tough. I think, you know, when you try to advance something on Secure Rural Schools with that name attached to it, it brings with it some baggage, even though, as we know, it's a very simple fix. That label makes it, it kind of raises red flags for folks.
Yeah.
And that's not limited just to the delegation. It's other members in the Senate who, you know, may have requested that 2012 GAO audit to begin with, to ensure that these funds are being spent in a responsible way. So it's, it's just kind of, sometimes it does get tied up in the larger politics of the Secure Rural Schools issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just going to say, it was a little irony, you know, the memories that come up on Facebook, you know, in your feed, and so I, I opened it up, and there's a picture of me standing at NACO. I can't remember, was it three years ago, when we went and we presented the resolution at the committee, and you were there too, and so I'm standing up presenting it, and it's still the same issue that we have here.
Yeah.
So we just keep plugging away, but it's
Three years ago, and, and what's really, and I don't, I don't know. I know you, you understand this, but what's really sad is we've taken our patrols out of the forest, and all this stuff goes unpatrolled in the summertime, and talk about fire prevention or crime prevention, or all those things, and we've got the money sitting there and we can't use it.
Can't use it.
And meanwhile, we've had a general fund for one deputy up there, which, you know, doesn't supply the four that we left, or that we got left behind. We actually used to have an office in the Forest Service Department up there, and it's really sad to see our forest go unprotected.
Yeah. Absolutely. And two things I should also mention, you know, we have also taken this to the delegation with a sense of urgency as well, because as of September 30th of this year, under the current SRS statute, all funds that are not spent have to be returned to the Treasury. And so, you know, that's the message we're taking to them, without either an extension of Secure Rural Schools that extends the obligation date, or allows you to spend these Title III dollars under the current rules, you know, these dollars for your county and others are going to have to go back to the Treasury. In addition, on the, on the politics side of things, again, on the Senate, we have a great coalition of sponsors of that legislation. We have both the senators from Oregon, two senators from Washington, both senators from Idaho, as well as the chairman of the Finance Committee in the Senate, Orrin Hatch from Utah. So we have very influential and powerful members in support of this legislation, but again, it's just, there's not a whole lot of things moving out of the Senate, and, you know, there's larger political dynamics that can be tricky with the issue.
Thank you.
Moving on to opioid funding. This is, as you well know, a public health crisis, not just in Marion County, but in communities all across the country. Marion County is doing its best and doing a lot of great work, not just in treating, treating these individuals, but in trying to prevent it from becoming an even worse crisis. But at the end of the day, part of that, that obviously requires money. So Marion County's message to the federal government is to provide funding to Marion County and communities all across the country, so they can help combat this public health crisis. Things are moving in the right direction in terms of opioid funding. The Trump administration has taken this very seriously. They just in January extended their emergency declaration, considering the opioid epidemic as a public health crisis, which provides a little flexibility to federal agencies to provide more funding. He also proposed, the Trump administration in their 2018 budget request, they proposed $13 billion over the next two years to the Department of Health and Human Services for grant programs to help local communities with this. Ultimately, however, it's up to Congress, and as we'll talk about later, Congress has decided to give themselves a lot of money to play with. So the message we're taking to the delegation is that they need to help local, local communities combat this on the ground, because there's just not a lot of money in municipal budgets to, to, to deal with this. I'm going to go through these next three pretty quickly. These have been on your agenda for a year or two now, the Second Chance Act funding and reauthorization. This is something you have been successful in tapping into in the past. It needs to be reauthorized. There is legislation introduced in the House and Senate this Congress to reauthorize this program, so we just want to be supportive of those efforts and urge Congress, once it is authorized, to fully fund it at $100 million per year. And then, this is something we put on there every year as well. We want to support funding levels for programs and agencies that are important to you, that have made a real impact. Their money has made a real impact here on the ground in Marion County, like CDVG, Tiger, EPA. We want to tell the delegation how important these programs are to Marion County, and make sure that they don't forget to, to provide them enough money so that they, they can continue to make an impact here. And then finally, we want to urge the delegation to repeal the inmate exception for federal health benefits. That's another thing we've had on the agenda for a year or two now.
This has also been on the agenda for a few years now, is waste energy in support of policies that ensure, you know, waste energy is considered and qualified as a tier-one renewable energy source. There are, you know, continual analysis, and I should say, maybe even attacks on the status of waste energy, you know, based on the, the use of the carbon material and biogenic material. So we continue to urge the delegation and in Congress in general to ensure that waste energy does receive the recognition it deserves as a renewable source of energy, and, you know, we'll continually partake in meetings back in DC as well, with the local government coalition of waste energy facilities as well, in making this case to, to members across the, the country for support of, of waste energy facilities. In addition, this is another issue we've raised in the infrastructure package as well, in support of ensuring that waste energy facilities and expansions or construction of new ones would also be eligible for infrastructure financing or, or funds in whatever infrastructure package may come together. Also on here, we have the Waters of the U.S. rule. This is a rule that was introduced and actually finalized by the Obama administration in 2015. That would redefine the definition of Waters of the U.S. to include, basically expand the jurisdiction of EPA and the Corps of Engineers, and potentially, you know, put into place new stipulations and regulations on waters within the county that you guys have never had to deal with federal involvement on before. As soon as the Trump administration took office, they began the process of rolling back this regulation. They have put into, they've tried to put into effect a rule that would delay this for two years and reevaluate the rule and revert back to, provide a new definition that it addresses the concerns that Marion County and others have raised with the federal overreach that they see in this. Currently, there's lawsuits on just about every step of the process, whether it was the Obama administration's initial rule, Trump administration's reversal of that rule, or the two-year extension. But for now, we are operating under the pre-2015 rule, so as if the Obama administration rule never went into effect. So we continue to advocate for that, because depending on the court rulings, there's a possibility that this could come into effect without recognition of what the Trump administration has proposed. Also on here, we have opposition to the Cascade-Siskiyou National Monument Expansion. You'll recall, in the final weeks and days of the Obama administration, they put into place a slew of expansions of existing national monuments and new national monuments that included the Cascade-Siskiyou. As soon as the Trump administration took office, Department of Interior Secretary Ryan Zinke launched, launched a review of all of these expansions or new monuments, and last, I think it was summer, came up with a, a list of recommendations that he wanted to see the White House take to either minimize these expansions or completely get rid of them. Obviously, there's debates of what the White House actually has authority to do under existing law in the Antiquities Act, but we continue to, you know, tell the congressional delegation the detrimental impact that this has and the concerns of the county with these lands and the ONC lands that are included in the expansion. So we'll continue to monitor to see what the Trump administration ends up doing, and whether there's legislation that Congress takes up on, on this issue.
And then finally, this is not on the agenda, the final agenda in front of you, because it's still something we're developing and working on, but the Center of, it's Transitional Housing for Survivors of Domestic Violence. The Center for Hope and Safety has recently purchased some property, and they will be seeking funding to, for demolition, construction, renovation, things like that. We are going to, we are going to do our best to try and get, try and get the federal government to have a role in this. The problem is, it's typically hard to get the federal government to pay for construction and demolition for projects like this. One thing we are looking at, though, the Department of Justice does have an Office of Violence Against Women that has about 10 different grant programs, so even if they can't fund construction, once they get going a little bit, maybe they can help with some of the staffing and programming. The Center for Hope and Safety is doing a lot of great work for survivors of domestic violence, and we, it's just something we want to keep on our list, so if something comes up, we can bump it up the list and try and help them get some, get some extra money for that.
That's great information. I think the last I heard, Barb had sent me an email, and I said, "Check with Jane." So that would help them then, to be able to do that. That's good.
And we're going to talk about some tax cuts.
So, you know, those previous slides, that's your, your federal agenda, your list of grant projects and policy priorities. So now we wanted to provide you a little bit of context of the environment we're working on and what we've seen in Congress over the course of the past year. When the President took office and the new Congress began, there was three primary legislative initiatives they had, the first of which was repeal and replacement of Obamacare, which as you saw, you know, they spent a lot of time on trying to pass legislation and come to an agreement, but in the end were unsuccessful. The second was to pass a comprehensive tax reform bill, and the third was an infrastructure package, investment package. So they began work on the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act shortly after, you know, they moved on from addressing Obamacare. I could go into probably two hours' worth of talking about all the specific I could go into probably two hours' worth of talking about all the specific provisions of this legislation, but I'll just provide you the highlights here. In general, the legislation aimed to reduce individual income tax rates among all seven tax brackets, in addition to raising the standard deduction for both single and joint filers, and lowering the corporate tax rate as well. So what we did, when the proposals were being released by the House and advanced in both chambers, is communicated with Barb and you guys and your staff to figure out which of these priorities and other priorities of NACO and other associations could affect the county, and were priorities for you. So as you'll see here, the first was state and local tax deduction. So on the House side, they initially proposed eliminating the income and sales deduction and capping property taxes at $10,000. The Senate did the same. There was not a lot of support for SALT over on the Senate, because not a lot of Republicans represent blue states that, you know, tend to have higher tax rates, you know, state and local income tax rates. In the end, during the conference negotiations, there was an agreement struck with a lot of the Republicans, House members from blue states who were concerned about this issue as well, came to an agreement to provide an overall cap at $10,000 for, that included property as well as income and sales. And I should say, on this issue, as Barb mentioned at the beginning, we, you know, worked to draft a letter that explained these priorities and provide that to the congressional delegation, and advocate for your priorities and concerns as this legislation was moving through both chambers. That included the SALT deduction, as well as advanced refundings in private activity bonds, which I'll get to in a second. But first, we were really glad to see that municipal bonds maintained their tax exemption. This is something that there's been a lot of advocacy on for a number of years now, of course, even before this initiative began with tax reform. So both bills maintain the tax exemption for municipal bonds. Unfortunately, advanced refunding of bonds did not fare quite as well. As you know, this is a tool that local governments will use to get a more favorable, you know, rates on the bonds and loans that they have. It's the equivalent of basically local governments refinancing their mortgage to get a more favorable rate. So this was eliminated in the House version, as well as the Senate version, despite strong pushes from, you know, NACO, other organizations, and, you know, that we kind of tried to join and push, this eventually was eliminated. But there's been legislation introduced in the wake of this that would reinstate this provision. So we wouldn't be surprised to see something get across the finish line to reinstate that, because there's certainly a lot of concerns across the country about it. Private activity bonds, so these are bonds that local governments will use to support private activity, private construction. These were originally eliminated in the House, and this would actually also have the effect of negatively impacting the low-income housing tax credit. Under that program, there's two different credits that can be used to, you know, support these low-income housing projects, one of which is a 4% tax credit, which requires to be eligible funding from tax-exempt private activity bonds. So by eliminating the tax exemption for those bonds, they would effectively get rid of that 4% tax credit. So on the Senate side, I think this concern was raised in the wake of that, of the House's bill being passed. A lot of folks were concerned and surprised that this elimination of the tax exemption was included. So fortunately, in the final product, private activity bonds exemption was maintained, as well as the full low-income housing tax credit. The New Markets Tax Credit, which also seeks to incentivize private investments in low-income and distressed areas, was eliminated in the House side, but reinstated in the Senate and included in the final bill as well. So overall, you know, this is a $1.5 trillion tax package, according to the Congressional Budget Office. The, you know, Republicans argue that over the course of the next 10 years or so, we'll see economic growth from this, that'll supplant some of those revenues and the costs of the bill. But this was the first legislative achievement that this Congress, big legislative achievement this Congress was able to pass, and is sure to play a central role in the upcoming election.
So since, since tax reform was passed last December, this two-year budget agreement has been the talk of Washington the past few weeks. Just to give you some background, as you know, the appropriations process in Washington has really fallen apart the last few years. Typically, in a perfect world, both the House and Senate will pass 12 individual appropriations bills. Combine them all together, and they'll pass all 12 of them before the fiscal year begins in October 1st. That is, that rarely happens these days. Typically, we're combining everything into a big omnibus, that we're operating under continuing resolutions. Right now, we are on our fifth continuing resolution of fiscal year 2018, which began on October 1st, 2017. So people, there was talk of another CR after this, people were worried that you're not going to come to an agreement. The big impasse to finding any budget agreement typically is because, in general, Republicans want to see more defense spending and pay for that with cuts, with cuts to domestic spending, and vice versa for Democrats. They want to see more domestic spending and pay for it with cuts to defense spending. So they, they have a hard time agreeing on a middle ground. What Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell and Senate Minority Leader Chuck Schumer decided this year was to not compromise and just give everybody what they want. So what we see now is an increase of $300 billion the next two years, a really unprecedented budget cap lift we haven't seen since the Obama stimulus package. This includes $165 billion over two years in new defense spending, and almost $131 billion in new non-defense domestic discretionary spending. So this is something we are obviously really excited about, because what it means is, this $131 billion the next two years, really the next year and a half, since we're already halfway into fiscal year 18, is going to get funneled through existing grant programs that you will be applying for, like Tiger, CDBG, Home, EDA. A lot of these programs are going to get significant plus-ups, which means more money, which means they can make more awards and a better chance of you getting funded. Another important thing about this budget agreement is it includes a $20 billion set aside specifically for infrastructure. This is being talked about as kind of a down payment on the Trump administration's infrastructure proposal. So what this money, this is $20 billion over the next year and a half to fund all types of infrastructure. They haven't specified which grant programs it'll go through yet, but this is likely to include not just roads and bridges, but everything from affordable housing, water, sewer, infrastructure, rural broadband. So an extra $20 billion just for infrastructure the next two years, that we think Marion County is well positioned to go after, for broadband in the Santiam Canyon, for transportation projects here, especially up in the Santiam Canyon with Mill City. So we're really excited about it. But some other things included in this, as well as almost $90 billion for disaster relief. A lot of this is obviously for the hurricane relief in areas like Texas, Louisiana, Florida, and Puerto Rico. But there's also some wildfire relief funding for communities out West. So most of this money will go through the states that have declared emergencies, and there's a process for how that $90 billion will be distributed. I'll skip the continuing resolution for now, because I'll come back to that. But the budget agreement also includes a one-year extension for some of the tax breaks that expired in 2016. The biggest one is the alternative fuels tax credit, the one you're probably most familiar with. It also includes a four-year extension of the Children's Health Insurance Program. This is something that was, that was a divisive topic these past few months in DC. And it also extends the debt limit through March 1st, 2019, because we were coming up to that. The Treasury said they probably couldn't borrow enough money through April, so we extended the debt limit, which is important, because we're, we're spending a lot of money in DC these days. Not included notably in this is a solution for Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals or Dreamers. This is obviously, Senate Democrats shut down the government a few weeks ago over this, demanding a solution. They ultimately gave in, but this, Dreamers in particular, has become a lot less imminent. So the Trump administration, in an effort to force Congress to act to find a permanent solution, they said they're going to end the program that President Obama started on his own on March 5th. That was immediately met by lawsuits, and two federal courts decided that the program was going to remain in place until those lawsuits are settled. The Supreme Court just recently, two days ago, decided not to take it up. So as of right now, there's probably at least a year left of the program before those federal court cases are settled. So it's a lot less of a time-sensitive, time-sensitive issue these days. So the continuing resolution, as I mentioned, we're operating under a continuing resolution through March 23rd, our fifth CR of fiscal year 2018. Right now, House and Senate appropriators are getting together to craft a massive omnibus fiscal year 2018 spending package that is going to decide how and where to spend the, there's $63 billion for fiscal year 18. So they're going to decide, agency by agency, program by program, where this extra money goes to. And the important thing to remember is, this $63 billion is just for fiscal year 18. So their agencies are going to be pumping out this money before the end of, before the end of September.
In addition to what they are.
In addition to their regular appropriations. So that's important to remember, $63 billion extra money. So now, we will provide kind of a preview. As I mentioned, the FY18 appropriations are going on right now. It looks like they should be in the clear. They've got about three weeks to put this together. There's obviously going to be some disagreements about where to spend this extra money. But as of right now, everybody's playing nice. There's a few things, although unlikely, that could become a hurdle, and that's the Dream Act. As I said, it's not as time-sensitive now, but we could see Democrats make a push and demand some action on it before they sign on to any appropriations bill. The other thing is the border wall. We've also seen Democrats give into, give into this a little bit recently, in exchange for some funding of their own priorities. So it shouldn't be a problem, as long as they can agree on an appropriate amount. But those are a few things that could trip up the appropriations process right now in these next three weeks. So the infrastructure package, which Kirby talked about earlier, with the $1.5 trillion in tax cuts, $300 billion in extra spending these next two years, it's becoming less and less likely that we'll see an infrastructure package this year, or maybe early next year. We're probably looking at 2019, 2020, before they can stomach spending another $200 billion, even though that infrastructure package is over 10 years, that's still a lot of money. And, but the good thing is, a lot of that infrastructure money we were looking forward to in an infrastructure package is provided in this budget deal. So we are, we are well placed to start trying to take advantage of all this extra money coming out of Washington, DC.
And in addition on the infrastructure package, something I meant to mention earlier, is, you know, the county is currently underway on a broadband feasibility study. In the $20 billion for infrastructure that was approved under this budget agreement, some of that money will be going towards rural broadband development, and so, you know, we have continued to raise that with the delegation, but also want to make sure that we, you know, if possible, are able to put projects forward if, if and when those funds do come for rural broadband development and build out. In addition, this year, obviously in the wake of the tragedy in Florida, there's a lot of talk back in DC on gun control and what measures Congress should take or should look at. You know, we've yet to see anything come up yet for a vote, but it's certainly something that's captured the attention of the city, and is on the agenda at least for now. So we'll see how long, you know, Congress sticks on that issue, but it's another thing that kind of plays into larger politics of whether they end up taking up an infrastructure package in these negotiations over the appropriations legislation that they need to finalize by March 23rd. In addition, you know, Speaker Ryan and the President have said that they would like to return to, you know, take another crack at repealing and replacing the Affordable Care Act. We'll see if that's something they actually end up doing, but, you know, they have said previously after the last attempt that they do want to take another attempt at, you know, replacing that with a different plan. The tax bill as well included repeal of the individual mandate, so they've already begun to, you know, take at least steps towards altering and repealing that legislation. Speaker Ryan has said personally that he would love to take up entitlement reform. A lot of Republicans justified voting for the budget agreement by saying, you know, the real problem with the national debt and the deficit is the amount of money that the federal government spends on entitlements for Medicaid and Medicare and Social Security. So Speaker Ryan has said, you know, he would love to take that up. It seems unlikely in an election year that Congress takes up a bill that would most likely scale back, or at least be perceived as scaling back entitlements, and entitlements to individuals. But we'll, we'll see, you know, what they actually end up getting to this year, if any of this.
So then, the last thing we want to talk about in terms of 2018 is the 2018 midterm elections. There is a lot of time between now and November, and with our 24/7 news cycle, one story can change the course of this election at any day. And I personally got out of the prediction business in 2016, so I can't really tell you what's going to happen, but the common thought in Washington, DC right now, or the common consensus, is we might see some sort of blue wave. That's what people are talking about. The Democrats will, that Democrats might take back the House. The Senate is tougher. The map doesn't really set up too well for Democrats in 2018. There's a lot of, there's several Senate Democrats up in red states that President Trump won, and very few Republicans up in blue states. So the map for the Senate doesn't look good. With the House, obviously, everybody's up for reelection every two years, so it can go either way. What I will say, though, is I'm unsure of that prediction, especially lately. You're seeing popularity rise with the Republicans' tax reform proposal. As people are starting to see their paychecks get a little bigger, its population keeps going up, and I think is in the high 40s now. And along with that, Republicans in Congress, people are getting happier with them. So like I said, a lot can change between now and November. And in terms of Oregon, obviously Senator Merkley and Senator Wyden are not on the ballot this year. Senator Merkley is up in 2020, and Senator Wyden is up in 2022, but the entire House delegation, including Congressman Kurt Schrader, your representative, is up in 2018. Everybody, all five of Oregon House delegation, is running again, so it will be interesting to watch. But no matter what happens, it will be consequential. If Democrats do take back the House, they suddenly have a check on President Trump and Senate Republicans, to where it could force compromise, or even less could get done. If Republicans hang on to their majorities in the House and Senate, they suddenly have an extra two years to keep going down their list of priorities, like Kirby talked about, entitlement reform, take another crack at the Affordable Care Act. So it's going to be consequential, it's going to be exciting to watch, but I wouldn't listen to many people who are telling you what's going to happen, because a lot can change.
Including you?
Yeah, including me.
Well.
And with that, that is Marion County's 2018 federal agenda and kind of the lay of the land of Washington, DC. And we are available to answer any questions you might have, or anything like that. Do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I mean, just on a final note, you know, we are particularly excited about your federal agenda this year, and, you know, the budget agreement that Michael talked about, and the additional funds that are coming out of Washington. We think the county is very well positioned with some of the grant proposals we have already submitted and plan on submitting this year. So we're very excited about your projects, and seeing, you know, what federal funds we can hopefully bring back to Marion County this year.
Thank you. That's a very in-depth presentation. Appreciate that. Any comments or questions?
Well, I just want, yeah, thank you for all the detail, and I think next week, we're going to have an opportunity to look at our lottery budget, and where we're seeing our priorities to go for economic development, and they're matching up with a lot of the things you're talking about, and I just really appreciate that. And then having regional solutions and some of those projects involved at the state level, it's, it's great to see the cooperation between the county, even our local cities, and the county, and the state, and the federal government to help the citizens here in Marion County, and the work that you do in Washington, DC. People don't know a lot about it, but to have this presentation today is really helpful for those that are watching, and in the audience, and even ourselves. So thank you very much. And I think Commissioner Carlson's going to go back there and up some of those amounts.
Up the magic.
Well, I would, just a couple things if I could. First of all, a long list, and I guess I do my part in adding to that, so I apologize for the workload. But I'm always drawn to water and bridges, so just three I'll comment on. The Mill City one is of particular interest to me. The bridge, that's our main entry from Highway 22 to the city. It's old, weight restricted. I've worked with ODOT on it, and they just kind of blow me off. I can't say it any different. There's no money plan, no, no date scheduled, just ignore it. I guess when it falls down, they'll think of something. So if we could do something there, I'd be very pleased. The third bridge, you've certainly been working on that for a while. We have our local problems in getting, getting the environmental impact statement done, but once that done, we'll turn to you to really try to see if we can't fill up our cup. But the most significant threat to Marion County is this Detroit dam passage business, Fish Passage. It's a threat to our farms, our cities, and the fish themselves. Let's just talk about three years of low, warm water and think something survives. I don't know who you get a hold of, but somebody has to bring some common sense into it and try to rein them in. This is just ridiculous. So I would really ask, I assume the others might or might not agree, but that's my number one priority.
Sure. And I would add, so as I understand it, the Army Corps is going to be coming out with their preferred alternative in October of this year. That's right. So next week, obviously, this is going to be something we're going to be talking about with the congressional delegation, and making sure it's at the front of their attention. And we will work together over the coming weeks and months to decide on an outreach strategy with our congressional delegation and the Army Corps folks back in DC, to make sure that they take into, that they take into consideration all of these concerns, all of these very legitimate concerns, not only Marion County has, but communities all across the country. concerns, not only Marion County has, but communities all along the San Yum River have in terms of water levels.
City of Salem also, not just the little towns. It's water supply here, so.
And I'm sure, and if I may, it's interesting you said that, Michael, because I just was talking to Fritz Graham at the Capitol from Senator Wyden's office just yesterday or day before. We're working on trying to put together a meeting with the two senators when they're out here or someplace with Army Corps, maybe midsummer, to hear what, to have them tell us what they're thinking and, you know, kind of a check-in with that. And I think the chair just mentioned, it's over 200,000 people that depend on that for domestic water, plus our irrigation. And it's, they're not answering the, I mean, there's a lot of questions. I think what I am proud of is how the community rose up together and all the letters that went in and all the questions that got raised. And they've got to answer those questions before they can move forward. But I want to thank you for trying to organize that with, or Senator Wyden's office is really interested in putting that together later on, a couple of months.
While I was talking, I'd make a motion that we do approve the 2018 federal budget.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, so it's a motion to approve the 2018 federal agenda is what you meant, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Federal budget.
Yeah.
We could get that done here really quick.
We just have all kinds of authority.
Just three of us, that's all it takes.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Again, our thanks to Kirby and Michael and also Joel as we get back to DC. So those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 It is approved. Thank you. All right, moving down to the next item under Community Services. Item number three is to consider approval of an ordinance revising and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 10.10, relating to business activities in the right-of-way and declaring an emergency. And Tamara Gedge is here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tamara Gedge, Community Services Department Director. This issue is coming before you today after a presentation to Commissioner Carlson in the spring, summer of 2016. I just want to thank Ms. Meisner and Ms. West for their interest and care for the animals in our community and it's in that regard that they brought this issue forward. It was in the summer of 2016 that the Board of Commissioners directed legal counsel to pursue this. And legal counsel and our department began to work on this in the fall of 2017 together. We brought this issue and looked at the information that was shared with the Commissioners and then began looking at the different areas that could be approached and considered in Marion County and trying to determine which pathway made most sense. Legal counsel, Marion County Dog Shelter, Control Officers, and Marion County Code Enforcement Officers were present for that discussion. And basically, we said that we don't, we confirmed, we don't have something currently in our codes that prohibits the sale of live animals in our road, our rights of, right-of-ways or in our properties of Marion County. Therefore, legal counsel began looking at other ways to do this and started looking far and wide about what could be done in Marion County through its, altering of its code. We looked at the City of Salem's code. They also have a code. I handed out an additional packet to you this morning. I just did a quick look around Marion County, excuse me, cities and counties in Oregon, and I found a few that have similar types of code. And so that packet in there, you'll see excerpts from the City of Salem prohibiting sale of live animals, lame counties, animal code, that sale, trade, bartering, or giving away animals in certain locations were prohibited. Multnomah County's chapter for their animal services, transfer or abandonment in public places were prohibited. So those are there for your review. All of those basically supports what we have presented for you today. I think the main difference is that all of these that are mentioned are mostly in connection with the animals. Ours is in our right-of-way code. So we wouldn't necessarily see it under our dog code 6.05. So we might want to look at how we communicate this to the general public if this is approved. Because this is in the, the proposed is in the right-of-way. I also have a letter that was presented to Commissioner Carlson through an email exchange, I believe it was through Ms. Meisner. And it was from BJ, who is the Executive Director for Lament Humane Society. The Lament Humane Society does support and encourages Marion County to consider the ban of live animal sales in county property and rights-of-way with the exemption of registered animal welfare organizations. They base, they continue to say that this will help protect, I guess, the care and dealings that are regulate, already regulated in Marion County, prohibited, not prohibited, allowed in Marion County. So we're not trying to, anybody who is a reputable dealer of sales, such as pet stores, et cetera, we're not trying to get in the way of any of that. We're just trying to ensure that we don't have folks on our rights-of-ways or on county properties, sitting with a box of cute kitties or puppies or other animals and trying to give these away or making sales of, on the roadways. So I've also included in the packet that was submitted for you, redlined amendments to the code, 10.10.150, under prohibitions. And so we've added point C, no person shall sell, offer the sale, give away, or offer the free, offer for free an animal in the county property or a public road within Marion County. And D, Marion County Code Section 10.10.15C does not apply to Marion County Community Services, Dog Services, adoption events conducted on county properties by a registered animal control agency or humane society if authorized in writing by Marion County, or adoption events conducted on a public road within Marion County if authorized by a duly issued right-of-way permit for Marion County. We also did a definition adjustment in this code on 10.10.140, defining county property, meaning any property owned or leased by Marion County. The term county property includes any plaza owned or leased by the county and a common within other owner or leasing. The term county property does not include any county road. So before you today is an order revising the code relating to business activity in the right-of-way and declaring an emergency. We believe that an acceptance of this would also support the county's interest in protecting animals in our community and ensuring that appropriate sale and prohibiting unregulated sale of live animals in Marion County's public right-of-way or on county properties. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Well, thank you, Tammy. Appreciate you going through all of the history and detailing the need for the ordinance. And we heard from a couple of our Marion County constituents this morning under public comment, had a short discussion on this at Management Update. So I know it took a long time, kept getting emails, so we're glad that we're finally here today to be able to pass this ordinance. Are any further discussion or comments? All right, so I think what we need, this is an ordinance, not an order. So what we need to do is have a motion first to, yeah, to have the chair read by title only, authorize the chair to read by title only twice.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we read by title only an ordinance revising and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 10.10, relating to business activities in the right-of-way and declaring an emergency.
I'll second, noting it twice.
So we have a motion that the chair read this ordinance by title only twice. And there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that's approved. So I will read by title only twice. This is an ordinance revising and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 10.10, relating to business activities in the right-of-way and declaring an emergency. And the second time, an order revising and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 10.10, relating to business activities in the right-of-way and declaring an emergency.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve an ordinance revising and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 10.10, relating to business activities in the right-of-way and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second now to approve the ordinance. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 It is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Ordinance of Marion County, just in time for the summer season when things like this would occur. Thank you for your patience and persistence. All right, we're moving now down to, we still have Tammy, but she is joined by Allison Penel. Penel, is that how you say your last name?
That's correct, thank you.
From the Oregon Garden Foundation. And this is to consider an order approving the Oregon Garden Foundation's 2018 annual budget.
Yes, Commissioners, this is brought for you today, before you today for consideration per the agreement that Marion County has regarding the Oregon Garden properties and its connections with the Oregon Garden Foundation, that within the regulations and the agreements that were designed many years ago, over 15 years ago, that stipulated that the Oregon Garden Foundation was to prepare an annual budget. And that budget was to be presented for review and approval by Marion County Board of Commissioners annually. So per that agreement, in those documents, Ally is here today to present that budget and can answer questions about various parts of that budget if you have any questions.
That's great.
So we have the budget here. It's lined out by revenue and expenditures. Just a few things I'll point out that may be of specific interest to you Commissioners. We do have the 100,000 Marion County Economic Development Grant included in our budget for 2018. Also, we realize that because of the debt forgiveness or reduction proposal, that this budget may change throughout the year. And so this is just kind of our baseline to get started, based on history over the last three years or so. We also have, you can see on the second page, about three quarters of the way down, there is a placeholder. We have a bit of a disagreement with the City of Silverton, but the City of Silverton passed our budget by consensus at their last February City Council meeting. There's a thing in the original lease agreement stating $7,500 rent is due to the City of Silverton, but we're having the OGF legal counsel review that because we think that's based on a past agreement and that the second restated management agreement supersedes that rental. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. It does show also our actuals to the budget that was in 2017. And a lot of the discrepancies in that are because there was no staff for about six months of that year.
Well, thank you. This was also presented at Management Update on Monday, and we had a chance to ask several questions. I don't have any additional questions. Mr. Brentano serves on the Board of the Oregon Garden Foundation. You have anything?
Well, it's just because I should have had, I should know this number. Where is it? I can't find what you're predicting for, oh, revenue generation in the foundation itself, you know, bequest, et cetera. Can I point me out?
Well, it's primarily outlined on the first page. There's quite a few. We have a thing of sponsorships as part of it. The annual appeal is predicted at about 20,000. So it is, it is a bit muddled up in there, but I could get back to you. We do have the overall revenue as $579.50. That's about two-thirds down on that first page, but that does include the membership and the admissions fees that go back to Moonstone for Operation of the Garden. So I can get back to you on the specifics of that.
You know, it's fine. It's probably a proper conversation for the board meeting itself, but I'd like to know what your plans are. That's what I was getting at. If there are no other questions, I'd make a motion that we do approve the Oregon Garden Foundation's annual budget. Because we just approved the national budget. We could certainly, certainly do that.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second your motion.
The world is our oyster here. So there's a motion in a second to approve Oregon Garden Foundation's 2018 annual budget. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 That is approved. And now the last item under Community Services, item number five, is to consider approval of the third restated nonprofit corporation bylaws of the Oregon Garden Foundation. And we also have Tammy and Allison for this one.
Yes, Commissioners, as mentioned in the previous agenda item, this is also a requirement under the agreement with Marion County for the Oregon Garden Foundation. Any revisions to its bylaws for those to be brought before the board for review and consideration, that is what you have today. The second restated nonprofit corporation bylaws for the Oregon Garden Foundation was last revised in 2014. And the changes in your packet, as we discussed on Monday, you have a redlined version in your packet to make it much easier for you to identify where those changes have been made. But essentially, it is for, there has been a long desire for the Foundation Board membership to be expanded. So this expands the Foundation's board from five to seven members, keeping the formula, if you will, that gives Marion County weighted authority and positions within that membership. We currently appoint three members with this revision. We would appoint four. And it also does update some language that is needing to update, that were basically old perspectives, old, excuse me, addresses, et cetera, and tried to keep it so that we wouldn't have to revise the bylaws as much. So if something changed, in keeping with a P.O. box, for example, and making it come back to the board for consideration. So Ally is here as well to answer additional questions. She worked on these.
Yeah, the main goal of this was just to get the bylaws in order with the way that the Foundation's operating. We took out some pretty dated language as far as different committees that aren't even operating right now, just to make it more streamlined and to make it more followable. And then, not to correct Tamra, but Marion County does, does keep the authority on the board, but this does propose two members go to OGF for appointment.
Correct. I was just.
Yeah. So the two new seats, six and seven, would go and be appointed by the OGF board from within the existing membership. And then if, in the event that Marion County leaves, the two options go to the, an additional one goes to the city and an additional board member goes to OGF. And in the event that the city, for some reason, would leave, then five members would come from Marion County and the two existing would remain appointed with OGF.
Great. Yeah, I asked that question. I just figured out why that line then was deleted below, so.
It's confusing.
It is. I was like, okay, I think I get it.
Especially when you read it a lot of times.
All right, yes.
Well, just to comment, the discussion and the desire of the board has been to not just expand the numbers, but to look out and expand the area of interest. We'd like to get members from Portland, from Eugene, and this doesn't really force that, but it allows it. So anything that would do that to make the garden truly Oregon, not just a Silverton garden.
Thank you. All right, so we have these bylaws in front of us.
Motion?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the third reinstated nonprofit corporation bylaws of the Oregon Garden Foundation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the order which approves the Oregon Garden Foundation's 2018, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. No, we're not approving their, we're approving the third restated nonprofit corporation No, we're not approving their, we're approving the third restated nonprofit corporation bylaws of the Oregon Garden Foundation. Alright, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Alright, that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Now, under Public Works, item number six is to receive and consider the appeal of the hearings officer's remand decision approving conditional use number seventeen dash zero two zero Brush Creek Solar LLC in Clofenstein?
Clofenstein.
Stein, alright.
I believe.
Okay. And Joe Fenimore is here from our Planning Division. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is a conditional use to establish a photovoltaic solar power generating facility on the 12-acre portion of a 14.5-acre parcel in the FU zone on Seagull Springs Road Northeast Salem. The Planning Director approved the request, and that decision was appealed to the hearings officer, who after conducting a public hearing, issued a decision denying the request. That decision from the hearings officer was appealed to the Board by the applicant. On November 24th, the Board accepted the appeal, remanded the matter back to the hearings officer for further consideration. Hearings officer conducted a second public hearing on the remand, and on February 8th, issued a decision approving the request. That decision was appealed to the Board by opponents. Several issues are raised in the appeal, and include that the application is not signed by one of the property owners, that there's insufficient evidence in the record to conclude that the facility will not preclude more than 12 acres from use as a commercial agricultural enterprise, proof of meaning the erosion control plan is deferred until the development stage, that soil compaction and weed control plans are inadequate, that water runoff will channelize and adversely affect water quality of a stream that feeds Stabby Reservoir, which is used for irrigation, and that the applicant has not proved that there will not be significant adverse impacts to watersheds, groundwater, fishing-welllife habitat, soil and soil stability, air and water quality. The Board has the options of accepting the appeal and remand the matter back to the hearings officer for further consideration. Once again, this will require an agreement from the applicant to extend the 150-day decision-making deadline. The Board can accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing. They suggest the hearing date would be sometime after March 14th, or later. This would, once again, would require an agreement from the applicant to extend the decision-making deadline. The Board could deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision approving the request. Under previous extensions granted by the, under previous extensions granted by the applicant, the existing 150-day deadline, deadline is tomorrow, March 1st. In most cases, when I bring an appeal to you, I have confirmation from the applicant whether additional extension will be granted. In this case, the applicant, through their representative, has indicated they will not make that decision on granting additional time until after you make a decision on whether to accept the appeal or not. On your agenda review form in the packet, the staff made a recommendation that if you accepted the appeal, schedule a public hearing on March 14th or later. After that form was submitted last Wednesday, I reread the hearings officer's decision, and I now recommend that the Board deny the appeal and accept the hearings officer's decision as its own. The hearings officer, as usual, did a very technical and thorough review, the staff supports her decision. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So thank you. So Joe, I just wanted to thank you for that last part, too. I went through the, there's a lot of information here, because we have the original hearings officer's decision, we have letters, appeal letters, we also have a copy of the remand decision, which then includes an interim decision, something about rodent control or something like that, and whether or not the Board actually included that as part of the scope of what we put forward in the remand. So when I was looking through these nine issues, my recollection in reading it is that the nine issues that the applicant for this appeal, appealing.
The appellate, yes.
So, right. But these were addressed in the hearings officer's decision to us. So let me just walk through them, and you can tell me. So the first one, that it's not signed, there's an acknowledgement it's not signed and a condition that it be signed, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then that there's not evidence that the facility will preclude more than the 12 acres, that's discussed in the report, and it says it's more likely than not that it will only be the 12 acres.
That is correct, and there's also a condition requiring on a final site plan to demonstrate that it's no more than 12 acres.
Okay. And then the erosion control plan and the compaction plan, those were presented and actually reviewed pretty thoroughly by the hearings officer, and they're addressed in the report.
They are, that is correct.
So the appellants are just saying that they don't agree, I guess is what I would, how I would typify that. Weed control plan, there's also a weed control plan that was in, that was discussed and was presented, is that right?
That is correct.
So what it says, one of the criterion was misapplied, can you remind me what criterion is? One of the criteria actually would be.
I did not specifically look that one up.
Okay, well, you look it up before I get done here. Let's go through the last three, though, before you do that. The water runoff, that was addressed from the reservoir, correct?
The, yeah, the effect on groundwater and surface water was, or on, surface water and runoff was discussed, correct.
And there is a condition that they contact the fire service to make sure that they're okay with it before they get a permit.
That is correct, yes.
And then the impacts on watersheds, groundwater, fish, and so on, but I thought those were addressed in the discussion.
The hearings officer discussed them and concludes that that criterion is satisfied.
Okay. So just number six, and we just don't know what that is, but let me just say.
I think number six is addressed in their appeal letter on page three.
And what is?
It says the hearings officer misapplied County Code 17120 in finding that a planning director's decision can itself constitute substantial evidence, even if it is not supported by other evidence.
Is that sound?
I'm not sure what that argument means.
Right. So, so that would be the only basis on which we would have some new argument, would be that one, I think, because my, I would, I would just say, for me, if there were things that weren't addressed in any of the hearings, that are now being brought and we needed to consider them here or remanding it, I would be more inclined to say, yeah, let's take on the appeal. But I didn't get that sense. I got the sense that it was just more rehashing the same arguments that were addressed in the hearings officer's report, and the appellant's not being satisfied with the decision and how that was laid out by the hearings officer. But I guess my concern is, because I recognize that there are always legitimate concerns on both sides of these land use cases, and we've had this discussion before, so there are a lot of promises made in here about things that they will do now that they've brought it back. I'm talking now about the original applicant that wants to put the solar farm in, and concerns on the part of the neighbors' nursery owners that, you know, rodents will be there and that kind of thing. So where are we in our making sure that people actually do the things that we condition so that we don't end up a year or two down the road with, well, everybody made these promises and they presented these plans, but then it didn't actually happen? Can you speak to that?
Yes, so what I'm doing now is I'm pulling all cases within the last three years, and any that we have complaints on that we know of. And I'm doing, I'm doing, trying to do an inspection at least three times a year, and make sure the conditions are being continually satisfied. So that's once they're up and running.
Right, okay.
Obviously, in this case, building permits are required, that triggers a lot of the, a lot of the items are triggered by the building permit, and they're checked at that time.
Okay, good. So we're not relying just on the complaints when things go awry for it to trigger something to happen in Public Works, we're being proactive to make sure that when we put these conditions in, the conditions are actually followed?
Correct, that is what we're trying to do now, yes.
Okay. So that was the extent of my questions. What other questions do we have for Joe?
I don't, I don't really have questions, I just.
Statements?
Yeah. Nevermind, I guess, it's not relative to this case, it's relative to the concept of what's happening in Marion County, and this is about the rules and the existing rules and laws, which we are concerned about, obviously. So I'm gonna keep those comments out of this discussion, Madam Chair, but I have some things.
Well, no, I appreciate what you bringing that up, because I guess my thought, as I was reading through it last night in detail, was that the hearings officer made her decision based on the language in the code as is.
Correct.
And is limited by that, and you can actually see when it plays out the limitations of that language, which is why we're doing a legislative process now to address that. But it will not affect this case, because it came in prior to the changes that we're discussing. Does that summarize it?
That's my comments in the context of what we're doing today, right? But outside of that, I have some challenges about this whole process, what we're doing in our farmland.
Right. And I do think it's Commissioner Brentano's turn to make a motion, do you want to try something?
Well, I hope it's correct, but before I make it, we're denying the appeal and accepting the hearings officer's decision and conditions, would that be correct?
I think so, yes.
Alright, then I make that motion.
And?
Is that correct, Joe?
Well, we're also, we are receiving the appeal.
No, you already received the appeal.
We already received.
I'm sorry, you are receiving, considering it.
Right, so we would receive the appeal and then deny, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm just looking at the agenda, because that was the language.
Make that the correct motion, please, then, if it's clear enough. Kristy, you got it good enough?
So we have a motion, do we have a second to that motion?
I'm just really struggling with this, Madam Chair, I just, I have to say that.
You don't, if you don't agree with it and want to vote no, you can, you cannot second it, and I will second it.
You can second it.
Alright, I will second the motion. So the motion, as I understand it, is we are receiving the hearings officer's remand decision, and then we are denying the appeal and upholding that decision approving the applicant's request, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So now, further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, very seldom do we, do we not agree, and I guess I agree with the, I agree with all the conditions that have been met, but, so my, my no vote is going to be just in the fact that the statement of, of the, it's the concept of what we're doing, and taking, well, I'll just say, I'm gonna say I'm having a trouble with that, so that's what, that's what my no vote's gonna be about.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Right, passes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think the date part then is moot, right?
Correct.
You'll be able to get it done by tomorrow.
I have the order, I have, I prepared an order just in case, and I'll give it to Kristy.
Alright, thanks, Joe. Alright, so now, that concludes our action agenda. We have one public hearing, it was noticed at 9:30, so appreciate the patience of our folks that are here for that item. This is under Public Works, it's a public hearing to consider Zone Change Comprehensive Plan Case Number 17-003, R&amp;K Properties LLC. Joe?
Good morning, Commissioners. Once again, for the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is an application to change the comprehensive plan designation from multiple-family residential to commercial, and to change the zone from RM, multiple-family residential, to CR, commercial retail, on a .014-acre parcel in the 3,400 block of Ward Drive Northeast Salem. The property is inside the Salem UGB, outside city limits, and it's an unapproved parcel on the west side of Ward Drive, and is bordered on the north and west by Property Zone CR, and on the south by properties in an RM zone. If the request is approved, it will allow the applicant to expand the existing trailer sales business onto the subject property. The Planning Division requested comments from various governmental agencies. County Public Works, Department of Public Works, Land Development Engineering Permit Section reviewed the proposal and requested a condition requiring the applicant to obtain a stormwater permit from their office prior to expanding the use onto the property. ODIE indicates that a portion, that this portion of Ward Drive where they receive their access, the existing business, is under its jurisdiction, and they have no concerns with the proposal. The City of Salem notes that a housing needs analysis was conducted in 2014, which identified a deficit of land designated for multifamily housing in the Salem UGB, and that the city is looking to increase, not decrease, these lands. However, due to the small size of the property, it was not included in that inventory of available lands, therefore its conversion to commercial will not affect the projected deficit. A public hearing was held on November 8th, and on January 12th, the hearings officer issued a recommendation that the Board approve the request. The Board received the recommendation at its regular session on January 31st and scheduled the public hearing for today. The recommendation includes a list of seven conditions for the Board to consider if they approve the request, and those can be found on page nine of the hearings officer's recommendation. The conditions are fairly standard for this type of request, and require the applicant to obtain building permits, stormwater permits, permits from city for sewer and water, to pave the lot, and to meet the development standards in the code, in the zone code. The Board has the options of continuing the public hearing, close the public hearing and leave the record open, close the hearing and approve, modify or deny the request, or remand the matter back to the hearings officer for further consideration. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you have at this time.
Questions for Joe?
At this time.
Alright, so we have two people that are signed up, and you're already sitting in your seats. Margaret, I can't read your last name, I'm sorry.
Ganderow.
Ganderow, okay, and Roger Kirschner, is that correct?
Correct.
Alright, would you like to make your comments?
For the record, Margaret Ganderow, 250 Church Street, Salem, Oregon 97306. We're here on behalf of applicant, just to say that we agree with staff's recommendation and the hearing officer's decision. We believe that this is a minimal change that will allow for a more coherent use of land in this area. I'm joined by Roger Kirschner, who is the managing member of the LLC that owns the property, and we're just here to answer any questions that you might have about the proposed use.
Thank you, and I think the way that our land use process works, we're using the hearings officer, that when the hearings officer approves something like this, it does still have to come to the Board, even though she has approved everything and it's not being appealed by anyone. So in many ways, this is kind of the formality of us bringing it here. So I read through it, I don't have any questions, it looks like all of the elements that were required were met, based on the hearings officer's report, and I'm in support of moving this forward.
Just, Madam Chair, thank you, I just was looking at the conditions, as you stated in the last situation, I'm sure those conditions will be met for the permits to be issued and followed up on, so.
So, anything else you'd like to add?
I don't believe so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I'll.
Well, let's get, let's have Joe come back and see if there's any, that's part of our formality here.
Sorry.
We need to make him get his exercise here.
Do you have any questions? I have no comments at this time.
No, alright, so, thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing and accept the hearings officer's decision approving the conditional use of 17-020 Brush Creek Solar, oh, wrong one.
Yep.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Don't get, don't get that on the record, because I already voted against that one. Madam Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing to consider, and approve the Zone Change Comprehensive Plan, ZCCP, Case Number 17003, R&amp;K Properties LLC.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to close the public hearing, to approve the Zone Change Comprehensive Plan, there are conditions listed in this, those will, you're gonna be coming back to us, right, with the ordinance?
Correct.
And those will all be in there.
The ordinance and the ordinance.
Alright. So any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous decision, it's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I can tell, Margaret, I was looking to make sure there was no old cemetery involved.
Very good. Alright, so that concludes our business for today. I'll read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar, these are meetings where two or three Commissioners will be present between February 28th and March 7th, 2018. This morning at 7:30 was a Sedcor egg breakfast at the Fest Hall in Mount Angel, and Mr. Cameron attended that. We just concluded our board session that began at 9:00 here in the Senator Hearing Room. Tomorrow, Thursday, March 1st, at 9:30 is our Department Head-Elected Officials Monthly Meeting, that will be held in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Tuesday at, oh, all the way to March 6th, my goodness, at 10 o'clock is a calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, Courthouse Square. On the 7th, Wednesday, at 9:00 a.m., we'll be back here for our regular Wednesday board session. That will be followed by the Woodburn Marion County Luncheon Meeting at Luisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. And then on Wednesday afternoon, I think Commissioner Cameron will be attending a meeting of the Governor's Reentry Council at 2:30, that's at the Capitol Room 350 here in Salem. Kind of a short calendar, it's because I'm going to DC, so I will not be here, so one of the three Commissioners is gone, and then I think there's some other things going.
I think I'm gone, I'm gone Monday.
Right, yeah, so, kind of makes it so there's not two or three Commissioners.
So you know that means I'm in charge.
You're in charge.
And that shouldn't worry you both.
Yep. Yep. It's always, I know how it is, is when the second vice chair is in charge, I've felt that before, experienced that, but I got to do something, I think I overrid the chairs or something. Oh, emergency evacuation one time.
So, I wanted to go to the breakfast this morning and messed it up, so what would I have learned, anything new or interesting?
It was extremely well attended. The food line was relatively long, which was, you would have still gotten some lunch or breakfast, the breakfast was good. Yes, John Huffman, who's the State Director for USDA, was the guest speaker, shared stories about cooperation and leadership, relationships, basically, and I did not get to stay, he was still speaking when I snuck out for questions and answers. That's really what I wanted to kind of hear, was what his questions were, what the questions were asked of him.
So was any mention of the Detroit issue there in that group?
He never mentioned any specific, he used the story about John Day and when he was in the legislature, putting USDA and the state and other people together, where they actually took one of the old lumber mills and turned it into a pellet mill through just showing up and listening to people and trying to bring resources together. So Representative Clem was there, he had a table for his, I think he bought a table for his committee, so, well attended by farmers and business people.
New crops, new procedures, anything they talked about?
No, none of that, when I was there, that, that, that it, that get addressed. So, been interesting to see what, what the topics were that came up afterwards.
Well, there you go. Anything else for the good of the order, you got anything to report?
Yes, I'm gonna talk to you about it, but this thing with, what's, I get the numbers wrong, House Bill 2001, Senate Bill 932, where we're supposed to get people out of the cars, that, that showed up yesterday at SCATs.
At SCATs?
And it showed up in forms of performance measurements that we have to make, and we're now obligated to find ways to force people out of their cars, to make it as difficult, I'm gonna say it for the Speaker, to make it as difficult for people to live here as possible, and you know how opposed I am to it. I told them at the time, they were considering the rules, figure Marion County will be in noncompliance, all I can guarantee is one Commissioner won't, but the reality is, the hammers they have, if we don't comply, is maybe instituting the cells or not allowing, well, not allowing any state or federal funds to come to the county, or not allowing any growth, certainly any comprehensive plan expansion, that's the hammers they have, and it's a dirty rotten trick.
So...
I'll have it for you, and I don't know what the right response is, but I'm just, I just can't go along with it, accomplish nothing except make lives miserable for people.
So as I drove in my car today...
Gotta be ashamed.
Out to Mount Angel, right? Which is, you know, the expectation is to not have me drive my car out to Mount Angel for a meeting like that?
A little different to not be able to come back into Salem, to discourage that. This is the MPO that they're targeting, that has to reduce vehicle miles traveled, so it would be things to make it as expensive as possible to drive, to restrict lanes, to give them the bikes, my favorite, my insurance by the miles, everything possible to make it as hard for people to drive as possible, and that's not what I'm here for.
Insurance by the mile?
All those, anything that adds to costs or inconvenience we're to look at.
Yeah, that's, well, that's been a pilot, hasn't it? On the insurance part of it?
Not the insurance, but on the fuel tax.
Those are, there's an array.
Fuel tax by the miles, it's been around for a while.
Insurance, right, yeah.
Yeah, right. On the, on the high mileage cars, they've been looking at...
The other thing they're asking for, and I don't know why they have standing in this case, but Thousand Friends of Oregon's demanding that we have a, a carbon cataloging of today's levels, and then monitor it and report on our progress. I don't even know how you do it, terribly expensive, I got to think unfunded mandate comes into play somebody here. I'll get ahold of our friend Roger Nyquist, because it's gonna affect Albany the same way you may or may not know. I went to Albany 10 years ago almost and said, do not form an MPO, because this is what is coming.
I remember that.
You'll be telling your people in pickups, don't drive into town, shut it down, I don't know. I, you know I can get wound up, but this is the one that I've hated the worst, because it's just absolutely wrong for what government ought to be doing for people. Sorry.
All right, well, on that note, let us go ahead, New Jersey.